I'm really glad to see that a lot of people took time out in the rain to join us this evening. This is an important occasion. I'm also, you know, with the rain outside, I'm also reminded of the real tragedy that's unfolding in Houston. And so I think that we have to keep the people in Houston in mind as well. Thank you for putting this panel together. Every opportunity, when I launched this campaign on February 14th on Love Day, to become the next council member of Council District 28, I said to myself, "I'm going to take every single opportunity to tell as many people in this district and beyond why I'm going to be the best candidate to represent us on the City Council or to be an advocate for District 28." My name is Richard David. I have two first names. I was born in Guyana. I came here as a child. I grew up in Jamaica and I was raised, and I currently live in South Ozon Park. That's important because I've lived on both sides of the Van Wyk and in this campaign, I've been talking about my plan for both sides of the Van Wyk and all of the people of this district. My background, I've worked for 10 years in government managing public money responsibly. My first job after college was a project manager at the Economic Development Corporation. There, after a series of promotions, I became their vice president after eight years. I was one of the youngest people of color to be a vice president in that agency. It's important because we continue to break barriers, not just for myself and my family. You know, I was raised by a mother who, as a single mom, still working two jobs. It's important because as a community, we get a voice at some of the largest, most powerful agencies to bring resources back to our detriment. After that, I got an opportunity to run a citywide transportation program to lower the cost of mass transit for working families. And then, most recently, I worked at the Administration for Children's Services, where I'm on leave to run this election. I'm honored to put my record before you, a record of action, and I'm asking you for your support because we desperately need a council member who is going to work twice as hard to make up for lost times in District 28. Is that my turn? Okay. Outside of my work history, what have I done in the community? Why am I deserving of your support? Because everyone's worked. For nine years, I was on our community board. I was chair of various committees. Most recently, I was chair of Economic Development. In that capacity, what I did is I got small businesses registered as MWBS. That's where minority of women-owned businesses get a preference for government contracting. I tutor kids at night. Not over, not because I decided I was going to run the first city council, but because the graduation rate at every single high school in this district is less than 50%. And I decided I was going to do something about it. And my friends and I, after college, eight years, nine years ago, decided that we're going to tutor kids at night. And eight years later, I'm happy to tell you that we've helped over 800 young people realize their full potential, finishing graduation, finishing high school, finding a job, growing into being well-rounded adults who we can say are products of Southeast Queens like myself. I'm happy to tell you that, you know, outside of that, I've been, you know, I've been in this community for 20-something years. I became a homeowner at 25 years old. I want to see that more young people and people of all ages, especially seniors, can own their own homes because affordable housing in our neighborhood is increasingly a challenge. And not just for homeowners, for renters as well. You know, when I get into the City Council, I'm going to be a voice for every single person in our district. And I truly mean that. I know I come before you as a candidate who, you know, I'm West Indian. We've never had someone like me represent this district. And I know that there's going to be a lot of questions about, "Am I going to be a fair representative for all the people of this district?" I embrace those questions because I believe that, you know, that's why I'm running in this race, to tell you how specifically I'm going to represent all the people of this district. I'm excited to have this opportunity. And thank you so much for putting this forum together.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to Adrian Adams, who is the candidate as well for the Council District, who is a Democrat.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank the authors of this wonderful evening for this opportunity to come before you this evening. We are very excited to be here. We are very excited about this race. My name is Adrian Adams and I am running for City Council in our wonderful District 28. I am the chairperson of Community Board 12, the second-largest community board in the borough of Queens. I have been the chairperson of Community Board 12 since 2012. I began a membership on that board in 2009 and was quickly appointed to chair the Education Committee in 2010. A lot of you in this room have been in a lot of battles with me over the years. And we have been in battles because our children have been hurting across this district and across the city of New York. Under the Bloomberg administration, we were under attack because of colocation and school closures. One right here in Rochdale, and many of you were here with me. Many of you were here for the public hearings that we attended again and again and again in support of our children that would come to microphones like these. And cry when they took a look at adults texting. They wouldn't even give the children an opportunity. No respect at all. The children were children that looked like you and me. They were children of color for the most part. And they would beg the panel, the DOE panel, to please not close their school, to please keep their schools open. Their schools were their mother. Their schools were their father. Their schools were their aftercare. Their schools were everything to them. And you know what the panel did, ladies and gentlemen, under the Bloomberg administration? They kept their heads down and they took messages and they read their email while our children cried before them to keep their schools open. We were fighting for our children. And a lot of those meetings, we were there and the parents weren't there. But we were there as advocates, fighting for our children in the schools across Southeast Queens because we were under attack. I led a very successful, and I'm using the term "success" because Success Academy was that school that wanted to bring those babies into August Martin. And I led the charge as education chairperson of Community Board 12 to make sure that Eva Moss Schools did not bring a Success Academy into a high school with children that are bigger than my husband. And there are four schools in August Martin. Some are doing well, but we know that August Martin needs our help as well. But she wanted to bring kindergarten children into August Martin. How awful. What kind of teaching is this? So I led that very successful revolt against that, and guess what? It never happened. I have been sitting alongside our local elected officials for a number of years. We need someone in this City Council seat, ladies and gentlemen, that can start the job tomorrow. I am the only candidate on the ballot that can do that for you. I've been working alongside of our borough president, Helen Marshall, who appointed me to Community Board 12, and now the Olympic Cats, and several of our local elected officials. The majority of them who voted unanimously, led by Vivian Cook, voted unanimously to have me placed on the ballot when the agency became available. So I stand here before you as the most qualified candidate to take leadership as your next City Council member for District 28. And I ask you for your vote on September 12th. Vote Adrian Adams. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now begin the round-robin questioning portion of this forum, and William McDonald will ask the first question as a moderator.
Good evening. My first question, mayoral control of New York City schools. As you know, since Mike Bloomberg took office, the school system in New York City has changed from community boards, or should I say, school boards, to mayoral control, where he has community education councils. How do you feel about mayoral control in New York City schools? And do you feel that they are working for your district?
Well, I'll take that. You and I have been through many battles together, Mr. McDonald. So I'm sure that you know abundantly about the issue of education and educating our children in Southeast Queens. Mayoral control has been a questionable decision for a number of years. I happen to believe that, for now, we still need mayoral control. However, it needs to be tweaked to include the community. We're doing quite well right now with community schools, but we need to have more of that activity around Southeast Queens and the borough and the city. But mayoral control, for now, I think should be left alone. However, I would encourage the mayor, I would encourage everyone under the sound of my voice, to be involved with your schools. We need to make sure that we are there in the interest of our children. So yes, to mayoral control, but yes, also an extension of community involvement. That's something that is sorely lacking right now with mayoral control.
I want to see more community involvement in our schools. There's a certain, there's a specific type of program under mayoral control that's shown a lot of promise. The Renewal Schools Program. It was launched around specifically what they're called failing schools. This is where they launch targeted assistance for students who are not graduating because of specific programs. Programs like the math regions. The majority of kids who are dropping out of high school for an academic reason, drop out because they cannot pass the math and science regions. And so we need to be very targeted and specific with these programs. And mayoral control with renewal schools is what we need to have more of. And I want to see that expanded in our community and to give our community a greater voice. What I also want to see is that we're funding nonprofits because I don't believe that, you know, the Department of Education is gigantic. It's a $19 billion budget. I want to see that nonprofits outside of schools are providing support to teachers and principals and engaging parents so that we can have a better school system. That's what I want to see.
Thank you. The next question is for both candidates. Mr. David, you espoused on New York One that you managed $2 billion in monies with the Economic Development Corporation. What have you done in your tenure with the agency for Council District 28 in regard to advocating for some of those funds to come to this district and/or implementing anything relative to what you had charge of here in Council District 28? Likewise, Ms. Adams, you have been on the Community Board 12 and I believe in your capacity, it was acknowledged on New York One as well that you had worked with Goldman Sachs or something to that effect. What have you done? What programs, what initiatives have you implemented and participated in within Council District 28 that affect our community? Mr. David?
Thank you, Mr. Reed. That's right. I'm the only candidate that's ever managed public monies in this race. And as a district emerging from corruption, it's actually the defining issue. I'm happy to tell you that I managed over $2 billion responsibly for an eight-year period while I was at the Economic Development Corporation. I also have to tell you that as a government employee, you don't make funding decisions about where money goes, monies go. Those are the elected officials. They identify the organizations that are going to be funded through an application system and as a government employee, you implement it. You make sure that the organizations that are partners don't have to jump through unnecessary hoops to get funding. You make sure that it's as easy as possible and you also protect public monies and their responsible use in that. You're right. I'm running for public office because a lot of funds have not come to our district and I had a front-row seat, a front-row seat, to the neglect that our district faced. And that's why I'm running for public office because I know that our tax dollars were not coming back to our district. They weren't. And so while I did implement several projects in this district, including working with Haitian Americans United for Progress to build their first community center, the FOWA Senior Center, South Queens Boys and Girls Club, SNAP services for older adults. Those are all organizations I've worked with in South and Southeast Queens so that we get new facilities in this district. It was never enough because that was, those were, that's four, right? That's not enough and we need more. One of the landmark programs that I introduced at the Economic Development Corporation that allowed a lot of nonprofits in our neighborhood into the door was a program that taught them how to apply for capital funding, how to grow their capacity so that if they're allocated capital funds, they could responsibly do so, and how to successfully implement capital construction projects. At the end of my tenure, we had probably 200 to 300 nonprofits participating. I don't have the data of how many of them are specifically from Southeast Queens, but I know that I saw a lot of my friends who ran nonprofits from Southeast Queens in that room.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, as a side note, as I said the other night, I don't know of one job that the Economic Development Corporation has ever brought to District 28. I'll just say that again. As a matter of public record though, and I'm glad that you asked me about Goldman Sachs, let's just get that out of the way, so it will never be asked again, hopefully. I was a part of a three-month program in 2010. In 2010. It was a diversity apprenticeship program with Goldman Sachs. I was brought on as a program manager for a limited amount of time. It was a diversity program for women, actually. And it was a very fine program for women. As a corporate trainer, I was brought on into their human capital management program and I was brought on to help initiate training for the Investment Management Banking Division. So that was my total career at Goldman Sachs. A lot in three months. Getting to learn the culture of the firm, which I did not like at all, by the way. That's why I did not stay there. So that is the extent of my employment history with Goldman Sachs, as stellar as it is. I just wanted to get that on the table. It was a very fine program in diversification for women. As far as the work that I have done over the years, particularly with the community board, but I can also put out some activity that I've done. I have been an active member of the NAACP Jamaica branch for a very, very long time. I've been an active member of the National Action Network as well for a very, very long time. That is significant activism and activity within this community specific to the needs of our children, particularly with the environment in this country and the hostility around our black males. Those organizations have been very, very important over the years. We actually, my family and I were actually in the convoy going to the airport when Amadou Diallo was killed in the Bronx. There was actually a convoy that went from Harlem. So we took our four small children at that time, from Queens, in a convoy to Harlem, through the place where Amadou Diallo died in a convoy, all the way to Newark Airport, where his mother went with the body back to Africa. So there have been, I've got a lot to say, I'm sorry. I wasn't getting warmed up. The work on the community board, again, has been very vast. There have been so many activities, so many meetings with DEP. That is the agency that happens to be over Alawater. We know that our bills have been rising over the years and we've been instrumental in meeting with DEP. Now we see a little bit of a declination of those bills that have gone up so significantly over the years. We've also--
Ms. Adams, you have an opportunity to complete that thought.
Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the presence of Senator James Sanders Jr., as well as Senate Senator Shirley Huntley. And I apologize for not acknowledging you, Brian. And of course, the Honorable Congressman Meeks. The next question will be posed from--
Finally, there are ladies of speed. Okay, this is for both candidates. Rochdale Village is a 50-year development with numerous infrastructure projects that need funding. Idris Kevecti replacement, asbestos issues, which is well over $200 million. Understanding that this is not a New York City Mitchell Llama, but a state Mitchell Llama, what would you do to ensure that both city and state Mitchell Llama housing remain affordable?
That's a great question. I can come from the perspective of, those of you know that I ran for state senate last year, and I became very acquainted with a lot of you that live in Rochdale. I was told about cabinets that you had to pay for. I was told about a lot of things, that a lot of expenses that you've had to endure and the infrastructure in particular that's been neglected at Rochdale. As far as keeping it affordable, I can let you know that as your next council member, I will partner with local elected officials, both in city and state, to protect the interests of the residents of Rochdale to ensure that your housing maintains its feasibility, that you have the funding that you need to make improvements and that your housing remains affordable. That is a tremendous issue, not just here, but the entire city of New York. And it's something that is being watched by City Council right now. I intend to be one of those in the forefront as the Housing Committee is the first on my list to join when I become a member of City Council. Thank you.
In a lot of ways, the school of Jamaica is a model of affordable housing, although the infrastructure is in need of upgrade. It remains a model of affordable housing, not just for our city, but for our country. And I want to look at how that model can be replicated, especially as we face probably our most pressing housing challenge since the Depression. Specifically talking about infrastructure upgrades within NYCHA, what I want to, within the Mitchell Llama. What I want to see done is working with the state and the city to, you know, it's not unheard of for the city to fund some of these costs. A lot, let's look at MTA. It's going to be an uphill battle. I think you know that as well. But this is going to take an incredible amount of partnership with state-elected officials to see that additional funding is there. The other thing that we want to do, that I would want to do, is to work with the Board of Directors to identify a rainy day fund that can be built up over time so we can begin to make some of these repairs now, one at a time, building by building, circle by circle. Because if we continue to look at Rochdale as this huge, you know, development without isolating the worst cases and then moving on from there, we're just not going to have enough money to do it all at one time. So we gotta begin isolating a rainy day fund right now to begin to tackle the asbestos, to begin the major building system upgrades that are necessary, one by one and now, because the longer we wait, the worse it gets.
If anybody has any old cards with questions on them, you can bring them up. My next question, economic development. As you know, they are developing LaGuardia Airport, $10 billion-plus dollars. Kennedy Airport, $10 billion-plus dollars. Port Authority, $4 billion. What are you going to do to ensure that people of this district is getting a piece of that company?
I'm going to make sure that, I hope this-- I'm going to make sure that, first of all, local companies here have to get preference. That's something that was fought for when the casino went up. It's something that was fought for with the JFK redevelopment that's currently underway. And so it's something that we can continue to fight for. And not just, you know, any jobs that are created there, but specifically union jobs. That's what we need to see here. And I think that's what we're going to see if I'm in the City Council, working with all partners in government. What we don't really get to talk much about though, we have a lot of development that's happening, whether it's in Jamaica, whether it's at JFK, with the redevelopment of the casino, all in South Queens. Not a lot of us are talking about the traffic that this will create. Not a lot of us are talking about the asthma rates. We have some of the highest, highest rates of asthma and health-related concerns that are directly connected to the traffic congestion off of the Van Wyk and other things. I want us to talk about that. So while these conversations about the expansion of the airport are actually wonderful because they're going to create jobs and they will actually get subcontracted to our small businesses, I'm going to talk about the traffic. I want to talk about the nightmare it's going to be to get to work. I want to talk about the long-term health effects that our community is going to be asked to burden for the rest of the duration that we choose to live in Southeast Queens. Because we're not just talking about that, you know, that job that's worked the last four years. This is a lifetime. This is where we're raising our kids. And that's what the long-term detriment is going to be. So I want jobs. I want to make sure that they're local companies. But I want to make sure we're also talking about how we move towards a transportation system in our city that's going to be not petroleum-based. We are the biggest polluters and inheritors of that pollution in this district. And nobody's talking about how we, as a city, move to an entirely electric vehicle fleet, how we move entirely to a natural gas fleet. And in New York City, it seems like these things are unheard of. We're actually the largest city in the world that has not mandated these kinds of things as of right now. As a council member, that's what I'm going to be fighting for.
Thank you.
The growth surrounding Queens is exponential right now. And I can tell you as one that has had a seat at the table at just about every bit of growth that there has been, not just in Southeast Queens, but in the borough of Queens, having a seat at the table with the borough president and all of the Queens delegation, there are a lot of concerns from a whole lot of communities, not just ours, about the development that's going on in Queens in general and really in New York City. But when we take a look at Queens, when we take a look at JFK, when we take a look at LaGuardia and other places that are expanding, the first thing that we have to know is that we have to protect our MWBS. We have to protect our employment coming out to our districts. I believe that those issues are being worked on. We have had a place there. Some of you actually belong to the JFK roundtables, to those roundtables that have been taking place over the past couple of years. And the things that are going on in those meetings are meant to protect the residents of Southeast Queens. So those talks are being had. I would also say that in the conversation about transportation, as Mr. David referenced, and it's a valid point, we are actually taking a look at studies now by DOT. And I know that he's not privy to the conversations, but there have been several meetings over the past few years regarding the development of downtown Jamaica and our relative areas, Hollis, St. Albans, our corridors across Southeast Queens because of the development that is going on right now in Jamaica. We know that the traffic, the traffic's already a nightmare. Driving down Suffolk Boulevard is a nightmare at 2:00 in the afternoon, 3:00 in the afternoon now. That's unheard of. But just to let you all know, there are studies, and DOT, the Department of Transportation, is looking at ways, they are looking at ways right now to alleviate that traffic and that congestion in those areas. So those matters are being taken care of right now in the forefront. I can tell you right now that with all, as with all growing pains, it's got to get worse before it gets better. Just like your cold gets worse before it gets better. Our condition is going to get worse before it gets better. The difference is, is that we have a seat at the table and we have a voice as stakeholders there. I would agree with Mr. David on this point as far as pollutants. That is a significant issue that no one should take lightly. We do have very, very high rates of asthma. Not just in Southeast Queens, but if you take a look at communities of color across the whole city of New York, and when I become a member of City Council, we're going to have to take a look at the broad picture of health across the city, particularly for people of color, because we are the ones that will get the flu when everybody else coughs. So we are going to have to take a look at the expansive issue of health across the city. The pollutants and all of these agents that are coming to harm our families, particularly our children and our elderly.
Thank you.
I have to respond to, I think the rules were, if your name gets mentioned, you can respond.
If it was mentioned on a particular position, what she mentioned was that you weren't privy to the information relative to the transportation. I don't think it was--
That's what I want to respond to. So the Jamaica Now Plan, which is what it's called, was actually born at the Economic Development Corporation, which is still overseeing the project. That's the agency that I've been at for eight years out of my ten years working in government. I'm excited to see parts of it being implemented. One of the things that we have to be very careful about is how Jamaica develops and how the transportation system there is going to serve all the people in that district. And so, you know, it's not that I was not privy to those conversations. It was born out of my agency. And when we talk about, you know, access to the Van Wyk, one of the defining things in our neighborhood, when Helen Marshall was borough president, was closing some of the ramps leading on to the Van Wyk, especially in the southern district to ease congestion on the Van Wyk Expressway. I'm happy to have been one of the people there to oppose the closure of those entry and exit ramps on and off the Van Wyk. Because polluting us and telling us that we can't use those roads is just not good enough. It wasn't good enough then and it's not good enough now. So I didn't just join the conversation. I'm not, you know, not privy to important decisions that are happening around us. In fact, I've always been there. In fact, I've always been there.
Thank you. The next question is for both candidates. Hitting the ground running is very important. Both of you have espoused to be the best-prepared candidate. Please identify what piece of legislation that you are prepared to prioritize as soon as you get in office. And if you can, please prioritize what concerns you will be advocating for once in office.
The, the first piece of legislation that I would champion if elected to the city council is the fair distribution legislation reform. Right now, the legislation allows the mayor to put every hotel that we have in our district at the service of the city's homeless population. And we definitely have a one concern. And we need to reopen the fair distribution legislation to make sure that it's, it's updated and that it's not, uh, it's, it's not being abused to target communities like, like ours. The, what else would I do in the city council? The biggest issue, you know, we're, again, we're issue, we're a district emerging from corruption. We must restore people's faith in government. It's absolutely vital. The first thing I'm going to do is to advocate for more funding, capital and discretionary. Capital is where you build things. Discretionary is where you employ the people who's going to work in those things that you build. I want to see both of those funding streams return to our district. It's absolutely essential. I also want to launch participatory budgeting, which would be the first time happening in District 28, so people can believe that government at the very local level is working in their interest after a long time. We need to have people believe that very local city council is working for them and using their tax dollars appropriately.
I feel crazy, perhaps not the last time, but this, this absolutely is the first time that we actually agree on both points. Fair distribution legislation is absolutely imperative to the people of District 28. And it is, in fact, because we have, uh, we bore, bear the burden of every other community and Community Board in the entire borough of Queens as having the largest proportionate number of homeless shelters that have been located right here in our district and the surrounding district areas of Community Board 12. We have had, in 2014, we had thirty-two percent of all homeless shelters located within the districts of Community Board 12. Bayside has zero. Quite a few other areas have zero. But we have continued to bear the burden for decades. And what I have said over year after year after year is that we have been the area that hits what other communities don't want, and that has to stop. When I'm elected to city council, that will absolutely stop. We have a great fear in our community about hotels that are going up that will turn into shelters. We have a guarantee from the Commissioner, from Commissioner Banks, who says that it's not going to be the case, but we are going to hold his feet to the fire to make sure that it absolutely will never happen and that the fears of this community are tamped by the fear of more hotels turning into shelters. You know, they bring families in to our community in the dead of night. That's what's been going on all the past few years. We've gotten complaints into Community Board 12 day after day, week after week, year after year. You know what's going on in that corner over there. They're loitering because we had a busload of homeless folks from the Bronx, from Brooklyn, from other areas that were not here, as the mayor says. Bring them closer to where they came from. That is not the truth. They're not coming from where they came from. They are coming to where there is cheap space. And the cheap space is right here in my backyard and your backyard, and that must stop. So I promise you, we are going to get a handle on this homeless situation. We bear the responsibility for the city's most vulnerable. We understand that because we care about them. It is humane to care about them. But it is time for District 28 to have its fair share and other areas of Queens to have their fair share and resources that we never got, by the way, in return. It's time for us to have our fair share. It will happen with me as your next city council member.
For both candidates, as a city council person, how would you convince the federal government to restore funding to NYCHA?
Federal government, Ms. Hall.
I have to ask the question of the.
Federal government. Do we dare talk about what's going on in Albany with the Republican control? It is very difficult, and I know there are several elected officials in here. Ms. Cook is right in front of me. And she can testify to the fact that it is very difficult for Democrats to do the work for their constituents these days because of Republican control. They don't care about you, to me. They don't care about us. Isn't that what Kanye West said about George Bush? Something like that. But it's difficult to get the work done when it, when you cannot partner with those on the other side of the aisle, quote-unquote. So, Ms. Hall, with all due respect, that's a very tough question. We're talking about city matters and we're on a federal level. All I can say is that I will continue to encourage our elected officials in Albany to continue to fight for the best interests of this district.
I think NYCHA is funded in part by the federal government. It's, uh, it's passed through Albany, but I think it's the federal government. And, and I would agree with Ms. Adams with our disdain of what's happening. And so it's equally appropriate there. The, but, but it goes a little bit beyond that, right? We have a president in office that's not just cutting NYCHA funding at a time when our city is just having the most serious housing issues that probably any of us have seen in our lifetimes. We are seeing the hate, we're seeing the, you know, first it was Muslims, now it's African-Americans. It's, it has to stop. And so we are getting, we have to, as Democrats, we have to get ready to evict him from the White House and he cannot be there for four years. While he's there, though, while he's there, you know, we do have to, I, I want to be as specific as I can. We do have two NYCHA developments in the district. One of the things that I agree with, that we can use to our advantage, the president said he wants to repeal some of the legislation. The head of NYCHA wrote him a very convincing letter identifying very specific pieces of regulation that would allow her job to be much easier. This will allow development to happen, redevelopment to happen, reduce the paperwork burden, lower the vacancy rates that are currently in existing NYCHA apartments. I want to support that. And if the president supports it, then we should too. But it doesn't mean that we don't want to get him out of office and that we will not sleep until this administration is gone, the whole administration.
Thank you. All right, this is the portion of the forum where we ask that each candidate ask the other candidate a particular question. We'll start with Richard, or ladies first, or that, I mean.
Ms. Adams, I, I'm really, I'm very well aware of your work with the Community Board. I'm, you know, I'm happy that you clarified the Goldman Sachs three-month stint. But there's a lot of unanswered questions. I want to know, you know, we have a historic opportunity here to not make a mistake of the, of, of the past. And so I've put my entire work history out there, from I was twelve years old, my first job with the Boys and Girls Club, to now. What is your full work history?
My full work history, Richard, my full work history started before you were born. Let's, let's just, let's just be real. We're not going to challenge my, it's way, way more extensive than yours. It has to be. Um, my full work his, my full work history, I'm not going to tell the year that I started working at then.
That's understandable.
I will not do that. But what I will let you know is that I have a degree in psychology from Stoneman College. I intended to teach psychology on the collegiate level when I graduated from Stoneman College, but a funny thing happened when I graduated from Stoneman College. I decided I did not want to step one more foot into another school building for a little while because of the rigorous training that I got and enjoyed and loved at Stoneman College. I became a flight attendant. Once I became a flight, he wants to know my homework. You don't care. I'm going to tell you my work history. I became a flight attendant. I was a flight attendant for a few years. Lived in Atlanta for a little while. I gained expertise in human resources as a flight attendant and had an opportunity to work with people, had an opportunity to learn, to get rid of the New York accent, if you noticed. Had an opportunity to work with people all over the country and all over the world, actually. And it was very enlightening. When I came back to New York, I decided to come back to Jamaica. I was raised in Hollis, by the way. Went to St. Pascal Baylon High School and graduated from Bayside High. I come from a union family, even though you didn't ask that, but I'll tell you anyway, since you want to know so much. I came from a union family. My mother is retired correction for over twenty-five years. My dad retired from UPS and is a proud Teamster. Forty-seven years, still wears that gold watch. And yes, it's real gold. They don't make that anymore. So, raised in a middle-class home in Hollis. Fast forward again to me raising my family in Jamaica, Queens, where I've been for twenty-eight years. It'll be twenty-eight, it's actually twenty-eight years this month. Um, I am, I won't get into, I was about to get personal. See, I want to know too much, about to tell you about my family. Or, 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 sorry, just wants to know about my work. So, came back here. Um, I have worked in telecommunications for MCI, a company called Windstar, where I had, uh, I had Colgate, Palmolive, Redlon, RJ, R&amp;D, Disco and several other Fortune 500 companies as my clients that I worked with. I actually did ride on the Colgate helicopter. Several, I worked for a company called MedSave and Training. They actually built the training department for me because I had so much experience in training by then. After MedSave, I did some work freelance consulting. I have a background in education, so I happen to teach teachers and teach executive, um, executive management as well. Um, I worked freelance for a company for a little while in early childhood development. So I've worked in a number of daycares as well. Worked studying college. Worked for Goldman Sachs. Worked for Goldman Sachs. Worked for Goldman Sachs.
Again, your turn to ask Mr. David a question.
Why are you so interested in Goldman Sachs?
Ms. Adams, please ask that question of Mr. David.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. David, uh, during the New York One debate, I challenged you on your work with ACS. Uh, that agency has a deplorable reputation. I also challenge you on your intervention, if any, on the death of young Michael Guzman, who happens to live right across the street from me. That's why I knew about that case. As chairperson of a community board, I did intervene to find out what went on with that case, how that young baby died in his bed and what the ramifications were going to be. Last month, uh, his, it was deemed a homicide. Uh, and I very, I was forthcoming in that question, though you called it politicized on Facebook, which was, which was a cop-out in, in my estimation because I merely asked you about where you worked, just like you asked me where I worked, and I answered you. Um, I will ask you again, if you did not intervene in the case of Michael Guzman, who lived in your district, who there are hundreds and hundreds of children under ACS right now, who live in your district, are you intervening with any other cases in your district since you want to lead this community as the next council member of District 28? Are you doing, and I know you're relieved, but have you done anything else for any other children as far as intervention in issues pertaining to ACS in your district?
I, I believe then, as I believe now, that to bring up the death of a child in a political forum is politicizing the death of a child. I will address the question. And, and, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to sort of, to answer this question because I feel like I'm going to become a bit of a teacher. You know, I'm the only candidate with any government experience. But here's what that means, and here's why it applies. As a government employee, there's a code of conduct. As an agency that's responsible for the private records of children across this city, you cannot intervene, even if your heart goes out to that family. It's illegal. You cannot intervene into an ongoing investigation even if you are connected to that person. That is illegal. You cannot use public information or government resources or records to intervene in any, at any level in that investigation. So, you know, when you talk about having a council member who's ready to start on day one, in this district, it'll actually start after the general election, not in January. And I'm the only candidate who's worked in government for the last ten years. If we want to bring funding back to our district, if we want to bring that fair distribution legislation so that everything isn't dumped in our district, if we want to bring, you know, if we want to open new community centers for young people and seniors, something that we haven't done in a long time, then you'll vote for me on September 12th.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce now, because of your parting, Mr. Mosop, you will not be afforded, we will not go backwards. Okay. The gentleman that has just arrived is Mr. Ivan Mosop. He is a.
Maso.
Maso, I'm sorry.
Don't mess up Maso.
Don't mess up Maso. He is the Republican candidate that will be running in the general election. And we allowed him the opportunity to come here in fairness, to provide his particular platform and position. Unfortunately, he was late and he failed to, 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 provide us with the introduction. And we are at that portion of the forum where we are asking questions that the audience has provided us. Now that you know that this gentleman is here, if you have another index card and you want to ask a question of him, please feel free to do so. I will start with the first question from Eric, which is for all the candidates. And that question is, what would you bring to the council district that has been missing the past six years? And how, this is a two-part question. How would you address the homeless and mental health issues in District 28?
The first thing I would do is introduce participatory budgeting. We'll have the first cycle, the budget cycle, and we'll have an opportunity to get people involved in picking beautiful community projects that we want to see. You know, whether it's more technology upgrades in schools, whether it's a new public library. Those are things that we can all get behind and that we can fund. I, I mentioned that I want to reopen the fair distribution legislation and bring my colleagues along to make sure that we are systematically addressing the dumping of homeless individuals in our district. In terms of addressing mental health issues, now this is a much deeper issue, something that's been in this district, in our city, for a long time. And the, the city has a Thrive program. It's specifically targeted at helping and creating local institutions that will assist with dealing with mental health issues, whether it's in any population group or demographic. I want to see that we have more Thrive programs and centers in our district. It's as simple as that.
Could you repeat the question? The question was, what would you bring to the council district that has been missing the past six years? How would you address the homeless and mental health issues in District 28? And you have two minutes.
My name is Ivan Maso, and my top three issues address all these concerns. Number one is civic action for community power. I want to bring to our community power back to the people. I want to handle civic associations, block associations, people that are going to speak truth to power and let me know what the solutions are. So many times politicians get up here and say they have the solutions, you have the solutions, and I want to hear them. I'm going to bring a new attitude and new organization, new accessibility to the city council position. As far as mental health, I'm very sensitive to mental health issues because my brother is a, I would say, ward of the state. He lives, lives independently, but he's had psychiatric issues and has supported under SSI for many years. So, my mother, who was a civic leader, worked with those issues. And so I would be glad to work with healthcare and mental health providers to find what's the best way to offer services to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the loss of District 28 with discretionary funding has been significant. And we see the results of it over the years. We need that money back. That is going to be an extreme priority for me, to get our discretionary funding back, to get our resources back, to be able to put these ones where they have not been for so very long. Participatory budgeting is a must. It's something that other districts have been enjoying, but as was said, District 28 has never had the blessing to be able to be involved in participatory budgeting. And for those of you that don't know, we throw out the term a lot, but what it actually is, is that there is money that is given to your city council members, one million dollars, two million dollars, whatever that may be. That money is for the inclusion of the community to participate in spending that money the way that you see fit. Okay? So, so hence the word participatory. We are, we are participating together as one. We are governing together as one. My intention as city councilperson is to bring the community in, to be partners with city council. Not to be a dictatorship, to tell you what I will do, but for you to tell me what you need done. So we need participatory budgeting in the worst way. We will get it. We will get it immediately. As far as the mental health situation, Thrive NYC is a very nice program. It's still in its infancy, but I beg to differ with Mr. David, it is not as simple as that. Mental health is serious. We see it now more than ever, and it is because, again, of a lack of resources that we have not gotten in our area. I can personally attest to this. There was a young lady that walks up and down my street on a daily basis, sometimes two and three times during the day. Standing in the middle of the street, walking down the street, just cursing people out, blocking traffic. It's on a daily basis. But it's not just mental health, even though it is very significant. It is also the rise of drug abuse in our area. That's something that we have to get very serious about, be honest about it. We, the, the, the rise of drug addiction in, in our district is significant, and I believe that it is all relative. We need our funding back, and we will get it when you elect me as your next council member.
The next question I have is for Mr. Richard David. What are you going to bring to the community, since you live across the Van Wyk? Example, after-school programs, helping seniors with housing.
Yes, and I'm glad they gave some examples. That helps to make my answer a little bit easier. I've, yes, I live in South Ocean Park by Fox and 116. I grew up in Jamaica on this side of the Van Wyk though, on 138th Street. I'm the only candidate that's actually lived on both sides. That's a word, because we know, living here, that the Van Wyk is this, this man-made divider. It's like a Himalaya between our communities. And so, living and growing up on both sides allows me the unique opportunity to understand the great diversity that our district presents. What I, what will I do and how will I be different? First of all, we need to bring more funding back to our nonprofits. I've been saying that since February fourteenth. I've been saying it the loudest and the most consistently. I didn't just join the race and said it today. I want to make sure that our nonprofits are strong, and I want to see local nonprofits. When, I'm not talking about citywide monsters. I'm talking about local built capacity that will hire people from the neighborhood that will address issues here with our students, with our seniors, and just making sure that we have a district that's thriving. I also want to see that, you know, immigration programs are introduced on the other side of the Van Wyk and this side of the Van Wyk. We have immigrants from West Africa, the West Indies, all over the world in our district. We need more immigration programs, especially under Trump. It's vital now. It's absolutely essential. They're sending people into all kinds of programs to get them deported. We got to look out for everyone in our community, and I'm prepared to do that.
Okay, we have a question from the audience called Three. What is your proposal to improve police-community relationships?
Ivan Maso, I'm going to start with the fact that I've served as an auxiliary NYPD auxiliary police officer for the 107th precinct many years ago, especially during nine eleven. And there was a subsequent citywide blackout after that. I have developed relationships with police officers in the 107th, and now that I live in the 113th, I've been attending the outreaches of the 113th precinct, and I'm getting to know them pretty well. First thing I usually say to a police officer is, "Thank you for your service. I used to be an auxiliary." Actually starts a conversation. I encourage, I want to encourage young people to reach out to police, to be comfortable with them. But you need civic leaders and you need elected officials that are comfortable with police. You can't have somebody who has indictments to help in that situation. Thankfully, he's moved on. But we need a bridge that will help the youth relate to the police, and the police relate to the youth, and I definitely will be part of that bridge. Thank you.
I think that we're off to a good start with our NCO program, and I salute our officers that we deal with pretty much on a daily basis, right, Ms. Reddick, at Community Board 12, from the 103 and the 1113. I think that they are stellar models with program, with a program that is pretty much still in its infancy. The Neighborhood Coordinating Officer, Coordination Officer Initiative, which was rolled out in fall for our precincts. And I have to say, I am more than impressed by the work of our officers, I'm more than impressed by their outreach to our community so far. I don't know, how many people have seen a presentation of NCOs, of their NCO officers? Anyone? Okay, so a majority of you have not been privy to those presentations. They're very significant. They were held over the past few months for all of our precincts here in Queens, and they were outstanding. It gave our community an opportunity to know who their NCOs, which we call them, who they are. We are now able to bypass 311. Did you guys know that? We can bypass 311, go directly to our officers who are responsible to handle our needs. We can text them, we can call them. They are accessible to us. That's unheard of. Those of us that grew up back in the day, I had my parents doing that riding thing with the block association. I don't know if you all remember those days, but we had the ridership with, with community policing, policing through the block associations where I lived, and it was fantastic. You knew who your captains were. They'd have meetings, and their captains would ride around the neighborhood from a certain amount of time to a certain amount of time on a daily basis. It was a rotational thing. And that's what I grew up with. That's what I would love to see us get back to. But I believe that the NCO program right now is a very, very good way to start. They have encouraged our youth to become involved, and I think that one of the most important things that we have to let our youth know, if you've got a problem with the police, with police and policing and police officers, try to become one. Try to reach out and try to become one, because we're going to need them, and we do need them. And now that we have access to them, let's use them, let's use them up. So I highly encourage everybody to look into your NCO program.
As, as Ms. Adams mentioned, when you're on the community board, you have to work with a lot of different police precincts. I'm happy to see that the 106 recently launched their NCO program. The 113 had it for a while. It's a program that has a lot of promise. We have a way to go though. We have to make sure that broken windows policing is something that goes away, and it goes away immediately. We need that in this district, in our community, because too many of our young people are the ones that, if you've ever been at Central Booking at midnight, you'll see the parade. It's actually embarrassing. It's very embarrassing. It's silly things. And that's all tied to broken windows policing, and so I want to make sure that that's something that goes away. While I was at ACS, you know, ACS comes up a lot. One of the things I'm proud of, being there to help implement some of the reforms, was Raise the Age. The state passed a Raise the Age legislation, and ACS got to implement the Raise the Age legislation. This is where young people who committed a crime were treated as adults based on the kind of crime. Raise the Age allowed young people to be treated as young people, and ACS got the opportunity to implement that program. That's something I'm incredibly proud of. Another thing that I want to see, and this is something that's not in our district, is a community justice center. We have, and while I was at EDC, I got the fund, two community justice centers, one in Midtown and one in Red Hook. We need a community justice center here in Southeast Queens, in District 28, because too many young people get treated in a very harsh legal system. A very unsympathetic legal system. We need a community justice center here, because we need alternatives to incarceration. It just cannot happen anymore. Now, when we talk about, and, and you know, I'm going to keep offering real specifics, because that's what this campaign is about. I want to answer all of these questions with very specific things, because I want to make sure that you have the most information, the most specific information, when you're voting on September 12th.
This question is for Mr. Maso. The Republicans control the House, the Senate, and the White House. Please tell us why we should support your candidacy when this administration has disrespected and shown disdain for minorities, disabled, straight, gay, middle-class, and anybody else that does not appear to be white? What benefit would your party bring to this community?
Once again, my name is Ivan Maso, and I have Republican, and I'm proud of it. I'm going to tell you why. Number one, I did not go for Trump. Thank you very much. And I don't represent that administration. I represent you. I'm your neighbor. I'm your friend. I'm the person that you see on the bus and on the subway. I'm one of you. Donald Trump lived in Jamaica Estates, but we didn't know nothing about him because he went to private school. I went to Jamaica High School. I'm a son of Jamaica. Thank you very much. Don't get it twisted. Yes, I'm a Republican. Let me tell you something. Archie Spigner said to me, said in front of the invocation of the Southeast Queens Young Democrats, he said, "Back in the day, we were Republican." He knows his history.
Absolutely.
And let's understand that a bird has two wings. Don't, don't they? The American eagle has two wings, a left wing and a right wing. When you have a right wing, you go around in circles, and when you got a left wing, like we have Wobba here, you go around in circles too. I want to balance the equation. You either have two wings, an opposition party helps speak truth to power and prevents Democrats from running amok and becoming corrupt. Thank you.
The next question is for all three candidates, and it's related to business. What are your opinions on entrepreneurship? And what would you do to increase the viability and preparedness of local small businesses?
Yes, I'd like to answer that question, because I'm a self-employed tax professional, and I get most of my income from Jamaica, Queens. Thank you very much for all those who come to me for their taxes. One of my, the third top issue in my voter profile is high school-aged jobs, or employment for high school-aged youth, particularly young men of color. I want to see that there are trade apprenticeships, and I want to help people understand a pathway to self-employment, because I've lived it. My father was a self-employed public accountant on 12050 in Harlem. And I have a legacy of both civic service and self-employment, and that's what I bring to the table. Thank you.
The, with regard to small businesses, a lot of people in our neighborhood know that small businesses are actually the backbone. And we got to make sure that big businesses, these big pharmacies, they, they're just taking over. And we got to protect small businesses in Southeast Queens. Now, here's how we do that. First of all, I want to make sure that we are coming up with a program to revitalize the Jamaica industrial business zone. I keep saying it, I'm going to say it here again. It's neglected, it's abandoned, and we've forgotten about it. And it's actually become quite dangerous if you live around there and you walk around there. We, it's a great, it's a really great opportunity to reintroduce blue-collar jobs into our neighborhood. Blue-collar jobs that are growing in other places like Sunset Park, in Red Hook, and other parts of the city, but just not here. We have to take advantage of being so close to the airport and revitalize the Jamaica industrial business zone, because it offers blue-collar jobs to people who may not have a master's degree. Like my brother. My brother didn't finish high school. A lot of people in our neighborhood dropped out of high school, and they still need to find employment to make sure that they're productive members of our community, and that's a very specific thing that we can do. And working with the mayor and our, and the city council members, we can actually do, because we've done it in other places. I know that because I've worked at the New York Industrial Business Zone, that's the New York Industrial Retention Center. That's something that we're to make sure blue-collar jobs don't just flee our city. The other things that I want to do is limit the amount of regulation that small businesses have to do. It's incredible. Just today, I went to get doubles at the roti shop across my office on 133rd Street. And if anybody, the, I sat there, and I thought I was going to be late to the debate. I sat there for a good thirty minutes. I couldn't get out. This woman, the owner there, was telling me that they, she wants to open a sidewalk cafe. She wants to do all these things. But the letter grating and all these fines that she constantly has to pay is actually burdening her. And so while we have to fight to raise the wage to fifteen dollars to allow people to pay their rent, we got to make sure that businesses don't suffer and close because of it. And the way that we do that is to reduce and remove some of the regulations that we have in place.
The community industrial business zone is something that absolutely is pertinent to the discussion. I will agree with that, and it's something that our economic development chairperson of Board 12 has been talking about for a number of years. It's something that we've been taking a look at for a number of years as well. It's been difficult to penetrate that, because on a community board level, you're, you're only here. And, you know, it, it takes another level to do that. So, in city council, I think that we will absolutely have that leeway to take that a little bit further. I will also agree with the difficulty that small businesses have as far as red tape is concerned. It's something that we're going to have to work on in city council, and that also has to be prioritized greatly. I would like to take a look at the, the entrepreneurship for young folks coming in. You know, we've got young people that want to start their own Chamber of Commerce in this district? We have young people that want to start a junior Chamber of Commerce. I think that's outstanding. I think it needs to be supported. But unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of adults that really want to sink their teeth into promoting something like this, because sometimes we think that we know more than the young folks. We don't really want to give them a chance. And I say, "Please, let's give our youth a chance out there. They are our future, and we have to support them." When we think of something as vital as a Chamber of Commerce and the mere fact that a twelve or thirteen-year-old's thinking on that level, we've got to support that brain. We've got to cultivate that brain, and we've got to nurture that brain. So that's something that I intend to look at very carefully. Entrepreneurship for adults, absolutely right, but we have to encourage our young people to start thinking for themselves. We have to continue to motivate them to generate their own economy. This is very, very vital to their future and to the future of Southeast Queens, because they are our future.
Thank you. Because of time constraints, candidates, one minute for answers. Going to the speed round. Okay, one minute per answer.
Okay, this question is for all three candidates. What is the first piece of legislation you would champion or introduce if elected? Okay, next question. What steps will you take to address an alternative education program, vocational or skilled trade for high school students?
Like I said, I'm for trade apprenticeships. I want to see pathways that will get our young men into unions, electricians, plumbing, and what have you. Also, bookkeepers, stenographers, and on and on and on. It's all pink, blue-collar, pink-collar, white-collar, whatever. But they have to be- But they have to be apprentices where older skilled people allow younger people to come alongside them, shadow them, and learn at their side. That's how it used to be and that's how it should be. Thank you.
I think again, this is something that the three of us will probably agree on wholeheartedly. We are in dire need of vocational technical training for our youth. This is something that was a priority with me when I was education chair. We even took a look at maybe finding a building in the district and we actually had one in mind and then it kind of fell through the cracks. But we have got to get back to the basics. When we grew up, we knew how to sew, we knew how to cook, we knew how carpentry was still fashionable, automotive was fashionable. I mean, we're talking about HVAC, we're talking about electricians, plumbers. I mean, the sky is the limit to what our youth can do. Not everybody wants to go to college. We need to support those youth that do not have any intention of going to college and we have to build, builds, we can do that. We have to build that book tech place for them to thrive in this district. And I'm gonna do my best to make sure that happens.
I love, I love, but we talk about getting young people involved, including in politics. With regard to the specific question and getting vocational programs in our district, you know, we have one of our great assets, four-year college, U-R College in our district. And I think we can introduce some really stellar pipeline programs to get young people working. And we can offer a series of construction trades, training, and we can get the unions involved. A lot of the unions are interested in offering apprenticeship programs in the district. And so that way, we're creating sustainable union, good-paying jobs so that we remain a neighborhood, a middle-income neighborhood that owns our homes, that are thriving. That's what I want to see. And I think our young people, with these opportunities, are going to be poised to take control of our neighborhood and bring real progress here.
Thank you kindly. While we go through this, to make sure that we're not being, repeating the same questions, we're going through the questions, I have a particular question. Will each candidate please tell the audience who and where did you get your endorsements from?
I am Ivan Maso and I got endorsed by the Queens GOP, who the chairman is Bob Turner, the former congressman that beat Anthony Weiner. And I'm very appreciative to the Republicans for giving access to people of color. The Republicans in Queens are not what you think. They are quite a diverse group of people. And I feel welcomed and supported and affirmed in speaking truth to power because many times I've had to help them understand the black perspective. And I'm gratified that I'm a Republican. Thank you.
Absolutely, I was trying to write them down. We have the, I'm happy that we have the endorsement of the Communication Workers of America District One. It's one of the largest unions in the country. We have the support of one of the most progressive, inclusive organizations in our country, the Black Lives Matter Caucus. We have the support of Masal, it's a South Asian labor organization. We have the support of the Muslim Democratic Club, Stonewall Democratic Club, Streets PAC. And those are the ones that came to mind. But I don't think we have much more than that, I think.
Thank you kindly.
I have been endorsed by the Queens County Democrats. That is every Democrat in Queens County, except for one and that's the one that I ran against last year for state senate. That's understandable. I have the endorsement of many unions. I will start with UFT. I will go on and say HTC, DC37, 32BJ, Teamsters 237, CSA, that's the principals, PBA, the Detectives, the Fire Officers Association, and six EMT and EMS unions that fall underneath them. Laborers, Building Trades. I also today found out that I have been endorsed by the governor of New York, Andrew Cuomo.
Next question. Rochdale gave land to the city to create Rochdale Park. The park is directly next to our property, which has caused us some security issues on our borders. Many of us want the land back because of the issues with security. Would you be willing to support the city in giving back this land to Rochdale Village?
Yes, yes, I would. And I would support giving it back with capital funds to make sure that it's better than it is today. The answer is yes.
I really don't have an answer for this. It's something that I need to understand better. So I won't hazard an answer for it. Thank you.
Just for edification purposes, the land is right adjacent to Middle School 72.
Okay, this question is directed to Ms. Adams. Ms. Adams, do you have direct experience in education?
Direct experience in education, that would be yes, that'd be affirmative. I started out educating small children in college work study way, way, way back when, when you were an infant, Mr. McDonald. So yes, 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 I would consider that a lot. I can't even count right now the number of daycare. I also have Montessori training as well. I have also, as a former member of the Board of Directors of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Daycare Center, I also, we were responsible for several daycare providers and childcare providers in that umbrella. And I also taught for about three years, most recently, taught those daycare providers to the CDA credential, that's the Child Development Associate credential, that will allow them to begin their certification in education.
Thank you. The next question is for all three candidates. How do you feel about education from the inside out, which allows incarcerated people to get higher education? History has shown that education reduces the rate of recidivism, but previous administrations in New York State removed educational programs from prisons.
Oh, I would definitely support education from the inside out. I mean, anybody in my generation read the autobiography of Malcolm X and Malcolm X studied the dictionary and became quite an elocutionist, if you will. Yes, a mind is a terrible thing to waste. And there has to be, I mean, if you saw the movie The Shawshank Redemption, books, things that open a window, a world to an incarcerated person are so vital to their reformation or uplift. So yes, education from the inside out is a priority, definitely.
As part of the reforms that are being discussed with the Lipman Commission and Rikers Island, we must make sure that technical training, including GED and education programs are part of those reforms. It's the only way that we're going to prepare people when they get out of there to be productive members of our society. And I would absolutely get behind that. And I'm shocked, and we should all be shocked, that it was removed.
Yeah, I would agree with that. As I mentioned in the beginning, I was raised by a mother who worked in correction for over 25 years. She actually worked on Rikers Island and became a captain on Rikers Island and actually retired in the Queens courts. So I am intimately aware of what goes on when you're incarcerated, although I've never been incarcerated, thank God. But hearing the stories really, really impacted me as a youth growing up. And I can tell you that there were many, many sad stories that my mom would come and tell us, a lot of very, very sad stories. And you know what, a lot of them, so many of them were avoidable stories. When we look at the miseducation of our youth, which has gone on unfortunately in a lot of realms for decades. And then a youth ends up incarcerated and there is no place for them to go as far as education. That is even more of a detriment of coming back out of society. So I would absolutely advocate for that as well.
Next question. This would be, what would you do about the problems of the MTA? And from this side of town, we have problems with all of the buses that go down Garbua. We have problems with the buses that go down Vadel Street. If you see our people who are coming home from work, the lines that they have at Parsons Archer Avenue, it is horrendous. It seems like all of the services went out to Far Rockaway and they forgot about Rochdale Village where we have over 25,000 people that need to go to and from work.
A lot of us in this district are impacted by public transportation. Some of us are impacted by traffic because some of us drive. But the, you know, the media, this is one of the most frustrating things to me. Whenever we talk about an issue, whenever it becomes a citywide issue, it has to affect other people first. So this MTA crisis that we've been facing for since I was a kid, we haven't actually solved it when they merged the green lines and the blue lines and the red lines. They haven't actually solved it. Now it's, we have an MTA crisis because it's affecting some people. We've had this issue for far too long. And we are asking, we need to demand simple things that just continue to get overlooked. Things like countdown clocks at the bus, at the bus stops to let us know when the next bus is gonna come. A lot of seniors don't have an app on a smartphone to tell them when that next bus is coming. It could also, it could also, and this is easy, come on, this is easy. These are easy things that should happen, they should be in place right now. It's frustrating because we haven't had a voice in government to push for it, not with, not at the city council level. And that's why I'm running, because I want to add my voice to the series of voices in government that have been calling for reform of the MTA. And so while they're asking for more cash and more funding and I support one proposal, commuter, a commuter tax, where they're taxing outside folks who use our transportation but don't live in the city, I want to tax them to pay for MTA. We got to make sure that MTA is actually using that money correctly. So I also want to see that that reform happens right away.
MTA has been a very big problem for a long time. I can let you know that as chairperson of Community Board 12, MTA is very, very reluctant to come to the table to talk to us. It has been extremely difficult over the years to get them to come to the table. It is almost like this community is beneath them. And I find that insulting and I find it appalling that it has taken MTA years and years and years. Now, because of the development, they're peeking in all of a sudden to come and see what they can do or come and see about us. But again, our district has been left to get the crumbs. We've got to do something about MTA. Yes, they need funding, it's understandable. Yes, we have issues everywhere in the district when it comes to MTA. Yes, we have a colossal issue when it comes to the fact that we have been left to ride commuter vans because MTA has not done their job by this community year after year after year. We are now left in danger. You know, we had a death a couple of years ago because of an illegal commuter van. They are very, very hazardous. It's difficult for us to get our voices heard out there. But I tell you, once we get my voice in city council, I can speak very loudly and proudly and I will stand up and we will get our services that we need from MTA, finally.
I haven't spoken yet. I am, of the three of you, I dare to say I'm Mr. MTA in terms of how much I use the buses, especially the buses now, but I was definitely using the trains in most of my career in Manhattan. As an accountant, what comes to mind is where is the money? Show me the money. How is it managed and who's accounting for it? And my thought is this, I would move for legislation, and if it requires opening, I think my friends in the Republican Party might even help me. Move legislation to get a controller as an elected official of the MTA, an independent controller who is elected and will root out the morass of corruption that I know is in the MTA and it's been there for decades. We need independent review of the finances and we need an elected official like a controller. Thank you.
I have a specific question for each of you. Why, what way will each community in the district be represented in terms of staff with your being elected?
Oh, I'd like to speak to this because right now, one of my biggest issues is the fact that Rochdale Village has a satellite office that barely is a day and a half of coverage. And I think that's a shame. I lived and I went to Jamaica High School. I grew up at Grace Episcopal Church. I have lived, worked, volunteered in all parts of Jamaica. I currently live in Rochdale Village, it's only been about five years. My mother was aging and I had to move in with her. She passed in December and I now took over the apartment. So I'm new to Rochdale, but I do want to say that I'm not just for Rochdale like some other person. I'm for the whole community. I'm sorry that other person doesn't care. I have a few more things to say about that person, but anyway. Yes, I would like to have a rolling office so I can get around the whole district and be a different spouse at different times, different seasons. I don't expect to be just one place. I want to reach out to the whole district and bring us together and work as a community. Thank you.
My staff will represent or be representative of the beautiful rainbow that we are. We are the most diverse district in Queens and my staff will represent the most beautiful and diverse district in Queens. That's everyone. Everyone in this room.
The, I'm running on a platform of inclusion. You know, the council has the budget to support two offices. I want to see, I keep saying, I want to bridge the two sides of the Vanwyck and bring people together. That's why for the first time ever, I want to see an office on each side of the Vanwyck. I think that that's inclusion and I think that's fairness. The other things I want to see done is the office to be open at least one day on a weekend and late at night. Those, or not late at night, but after, you know, people get home so that you can come in at night. Those are things that are kind of common sense that we should introduce and we should do them right away. I want to have a mix of staff that reflect the great diversity of our district. Again, I'm running on a platform of inclusion.
Okay, I just want to say, because a lot of people came in after we had made our initial statement, Ms. Powell was unable to attend today. When we asked her, would she be able to attend? She said that she couldn't attend today, she couldn't attend the 30th, the 31st. We asked if she would attend yesterday, Monday to 28th. She said she couldn't attend. The only date that she had available to us was September 11th. And we decided, okay, and we decided that this was too important an event and that you needed to hear from all of the candidates. So we had to hold it today and she respectfully said she was not able to attend. Thank you.
We're not missing anything.
With that being said, that is the conclusion of the question and answer portion of the forum. We'd like to provide the candidates three, two minutes to provide closing statements.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to thank you for listening to all of us, to all of our ideas and all of our wishes for you and our future here in District 28. My name is Adrianne Adams and I need you to come out and vote on September 12th for me to lead you in city council. As I said when I opened, I am the most qualified individual on the ballot, bar none. I have been working with our elected officials for years and years and years. It takes one that is able to partner with others to make everything successful. We have already made a plan for you. I am already speaking with Councilmember Richards and Councilmember Miller in your behalf. We have plans for Southeast Queens. We have plans for you to make our quality of life... We have plans for you to make our quality of life the best that it can be, something that we have been lacking for years and years and years. The three of us are already speaking about the great things that we're going to do for you. It's not something that we're gonna have to think about. It's something we've already been working with. I've been working with Councilmember Richards in the interest of DEP and flood mediation across Southeast Queens and the $14 billion that came in from DEP. We were at the table there. Community Board 12, myself, Ms. Reddick, we were there at the table before that money came in. We were among the first people that Councilmember Richards met with when he became Councilmember. So, we've been partnering with him long before we've been here today. Councilmember Miller, and when it comes to transportation, we all know, well, some of us, hopefully, we know that he comes from a transportation background. Who is advising him when it comes to matters of transportation need in Southeast Queens? It's yours truly, Adrienne Adams. Already at the table with Councilmember Miller, who walked with me last night as a matter of fact and helped me knock off doors. I thank him very much for that. But we are already at the table with those two vital elected officials that are already working in your behalf and in the behalf of our neighboring districts. They are going to be the ones to help me when it comes to participatory budgeting, when it comes to the needs of our communities, because we are one Southeast Queens, and we've been one Southeast Queens for a number of years. This is not a seat to play with, ladies and gentlemen. We don't have that luxury right now. District 28 has no leadership right now in City Council. As was said, this seat cannot wait to happen until January. This seat will be filled in November. So, you are going to have to make sure that you are choosing the candidate that can step in that office tomorrow. Again, there is only one candidate that can step in that office tomorrow. You are going to need that in the interest of yourself, your families, and your future. We need to be very serious about this race. We don't need to compromise. We've got some very nice people on the ballot. But nice people do not have the experience that Adrienne Adams has to be your next leader in City Council for our wonderful District 28. Thank you so much for your support. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. This is actually really great. When I first stood up at the beginning, this room was not as full as it is now. So, I'm gonna take an opportunity to just reintroduce myself. My name is Richard David. I'm honored to have this opportunity to run and to have a chance to represent all of the people of Southeast Queens in District 28. It's true, I am the youngest candidate in the race. I'm 31 years old. Here's what separates me from the, my competitors. I am next. I'm the only candidate, I am the only candidate with any government experience at all. This is a government job. I've spent a decade at three different agencies. I've spent almost a decade on my community board. I spent nights tutoring our kids because I'm a person of action. And that's what I will do, because your next council member is going to have to work twice as hard to catch up. We have fallen behind because government has been absent in our district for a long time, local government at the City Council level. I'm, I don't have plans. I haven't made them already, because I want to continue hearing from you. I want you to listen to everything you've heard tonight. I want you to evaluate all of our proposals very, very carefully. And if you put your support in me, I will be a voice for you in the City Council. Starting on day one, yes, Hillary Clinton said it, and I'll say it to you. I'm ready on day one, despite, you know, being the youngest candidate, the only one with any government experience, and here's why. The defining issue in our district, the defining issue, has been us emerging from corruption. We need, we need, oh, yes, we need a City Council member who's not going to tell you what they're going to do but what they have done. And I say that because I'm the only candidate that's managed public money with integrity for 10 years and great sums of money. We need those funds to come back in our district so we can catch up. Again, I'm Richard David. I'd be honored to have your support on Tuesday, September 12th. I know that I'm asking you to take a chance, and I hope that you will have the courage. It takes a lot of courage to vote for change. And I'm asking you to have the courage to support me as we run an inclusive campaign to become the next council member for all the people and to bridge both sides of the Vanwijk and to become the council member of District 28. Thank you for this opportunity to all of our quartet members here, for our elected officials for coming out today, and for community members across this district. I'm deeply honored. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out to this program. My name is Ivan Masup, and I do want to make a correction. I do have government experience. Back when I was about 17, I volunteered as a crew chief for summer youth employment in the Office of Neighborhood Services. That counts as government experience. I also have tons of corporate experience. I've worked with some of the biggest Fortune 500 companies in the world, such as AIG. I was in, I was the domestic insurance tax manager responsible for the preparation and consolidation of insurance companies, all right? Those are the most complicated tax returns you've ever seen. I have two top issues. Civic action for community power. I want to reignite voter power district-wide, and I want to help our youth get high school-aged employment. Those are my top three issues, and I'm sticking to it. And I thank you for making me last, because he who is last shall be first. And I'm the first Republican to be on the ballot for City Council in history in this community. Thank you. Don't mess up, folks, Masup.
Ladies and gentlemen, don't go anywhere. I have some important information before you leave, before you go, before you go. I think this is very important, and it's pivotal that we become more educated. We have a general election that's coming up after this primary, and a big issue that's going to be on there will be about constitutional conventions. We need great, great time out. We need to get our electeds to come out here and educate us on what that means about the constitutional convention. And it's not only incumbent on these elected officials to come here and do that. We need both sides of the story, because it is a very important issue. Secondly, these, we always believe that these legislators and these elected officials wield the power. There's a statement, the person that feels that power?
It's us.
Is you. In the political process, however, is judges. We're not electing enough judges from our community. They're making decisions when we're not in, at the table. As much as you guys are playing games with legislators, the legislative bodies, we need judges. To that, to that, to that effect, I'd like to allow a civil court judge, a candidate for a civil court judge, Mr. Maurice Muir, to just address us for about two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Muir, for coming out.
I'll be, everyone, ladies and gentlemen. Just to flex, just came out and just introduced myself. I'm Maurice Muir. I'm a candidate for civil court. I grew up in the neighborhood. I lived here for about 50 years. I went to I-72, which is where the movies are in Rochdale Village, letting basic apartments swing, over there swimming pool. And I also went to Jackson. I'm a Jacksonite. When I was at Jackson, I was a student, speaker, developed my yearbook and so forth. And then I was fortunate enough to go to Boston University. I studied in Boston for a number of years. A lot of Boston University, I studied abroad in London. I have a London internship program there. After studying from London, I got my bachelor's degree in international relations. And then came back to New York and worked for a major law firm dealing with bankruptcy law. After two years working in Manhattan at a major law firm, I went back to Boston and got my law degree. After getting my law degree, I was fortunate enough to get licensed in about four or five different states, New York, DC, Massachusetts, and so forth. And then I decided I had to, I, well, actually, while there, I was doing plenty of discrimination for the state for about five or six years, representing poor people in the U.S. And after working in Boston for about eight years, I came back to New York because I wanted to come back to my community and serve my community. And so, for the past 17 years, I've been working for Queens League of Services, representing poor people in a variety of areas, which include foreclosure prevention, landlord tenant law, mal, uh, real estate litigation with real estate fraud, and matrimonial law. And in addition to working as an attorney for over, I guess, nearly 25 years now, I've also been very much involved with a lot of the various civic associations, which would include Community Board 12. I think I was on that board for about 15 years, 15, 17 years. Not a black man of Queens, working with the youth. Neighborhood civic association for about 15 years, and on the boards of NHS and a lot of other civic associations. So, as they say, you know, it takes a community to raise a child. And I've been, I believe, fortunate enough to be raised in this community and now nominated to be a civil court judge for Queens County thanks to my favorite people like Vivian Cook, my relative. And so, I'm seeking, and a lot of my other friends and neighbors, whether it's Mr. Lewis or Ms. Garcia, the congressmen, I know a lot of these people. They have worked within their capacities, Emma. They all attest to, you know, my girl, Yvette, and my nurse, these are all my people here. So, I'm seeking your support. You know, unfortunately, you know, judges are not politicians, so I can't go around making a bunch of promises. You know, we, basically, we will review every case on an individual basis. And all I can assure you is that I'll be fair. I'll, you know, maintain some type of judicial temperament, be competent, and render justice. I'm seeking, I'd like to have your support. Thank you very much for this.
I'd like to thank, once again, thank you for all for coming out. This has been an momentous occasion, particularly because Community District, City Council District 28 very rarely comes out with these kind of numbers. Thank you again for coming out. Have a blessed night. Good morning, sir. Would the candidates please take some of your data picture, please?